I want to call to order the meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission for December 9th, 2024. At this time, we're going to ask that Vice Chairman Lee Bogle lead us in our prayer and pledge of allegiance. We ask that everyone please stand at this time.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to be able to come here tonight to work on behalf of the citizens of Rutherford County. We thank you so much for the blessings that you provide to us each and every day, and we hope that we can take notice of those, and especially this time of year, Lord. And I want to remember that the real reason for the season is we're going around shopping and hustle and bustle all around the county, that we remember that you sent your son for us. Heavenly Father, we just ask that you watch over the proceedings here tonight, that the decisions that be made be found pleasing to you and benefit most of the persons of Rutherford County. Heavenly Father, we just ask that you watch over our emergency services, our military, and the direction of our country, that it's in your hands. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for all the blessings that you provide for us, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice.
Thank you. You may be seated. Good to see each and every one of you here this evening. We'll now have our roll call and determination of quorum.
Jim Aberwater. Jeff Phillips.
Present.
Mike Kush.
Present.
Lee Bogle.
Here.
Charlotte P.
Here.
Ray Gooch.
Here.
Chip Pinion.
Here.
Marvin Whitworth.
Jim Thompson.
Here.
Michael Shirley. Pettis Reed.
Here.
You have a quorum.
We do have our quorum. We'll now have the approval of our minutes for October 28th and November 12th, and I'll call on our Vice Chairman for that.
Thank you. I have reviewed the minutes for the October 28th and November 12th meeting, and both are found to be in good order and accurate, therefore I make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Do we have a second? Have the second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, the minutes have been approved. Public comment period, anyone has called in?
No, sir. No one signed up for the public comment period.
One for public comment. Items withdrawn or deferred?
Yes, sir. We did have several items, but the agenda that you have before you tonight is accurate. Everything that's on the agenda currently that you see on your tables is still on the agenda for tonight.
Okay. Begin with our new business, item 7A. Number one, Valinda Leonard, 244005, requesting a waiver for a tract of less than five acres along a private easement located at 5222 Old Nashville Highway. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, and good evening, everyone. As you stated, the applicant would like to ask for a waiver in order to divide an acre of her subject property to give to a family member. There is a concept plan that has been included with your agenda materials on your iPads. You'll also find a concept plan that was submitted with the application. The property will be within 1,000 feet of an existing fire hydrant which is located along Old Nashville Highway. However, the proposed lot that she's looking to create would be accessed through a private easement and would be less than five acres in size, which is the requirement. So that is what her waiver request is for. So I'll be happy to answer any questions. The applicant is aware that should this be granted, they will need to do a plat, obviously, for the subdivision, which will have to be brought back for your consideration. The applicant is present and will be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Ministers.
Doug, did you say, did you say this is for a family member?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Staff recommendation?
We don't really have any issues with it.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve. And second, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, it has been approved. In Section B, submitted for final plat approval, item one, Brewer Point, Section one, reapproval 232093, 54 lots on 52.38 acres, Zone PUD, located along Stewart Creek Road. Brewer Point LLC is the applicant. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, sir. Thank you. The preliminary plan for this development was approved by the Planning Commission back in November of 2021. This final plat is consistent with that approved plan. There are two approved minimum lot sizes in this development. Some are 10,000 square feet, some are 15,000. This section that we're looking at tonight does contain some of both. The final plat was actually approved by the Planning Commission back in December of last year, about a year ago. Final plat approvals are valid for one year. They're getting close to getting ready to record this, but they didn't think they were going to make the year deadline, so they're asking for a reapproval for that. I anticipate they'll probably be looking for recording here in the near future. So really, any changes to the plat that need to be made, we'll make sure are done prior to recording, but the plat itself should be in good order. We'll be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Anything for staff? Would you like to hear from the applicant?
I make a motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second, further comments? In favor, say aye. Opposed, it has been approved. Item two, Superior Property Solutions, 242083, two lots on 6.56 acres, Zone CS, located along Old Nashville Highway, Superior Construction LLC is the applicant, and includes a waiver for a non-billable lot. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, sir. Thank you. The applicant is proposing to divide this property into two lots. This is part of a partnership dissolution. Lot one will contain the existing buildings and business. Soil's work has been performed on Lot Two, but at this point, no approval has been granted by the state. There is a letter from the applicant that I included with your agenda materials on your iPads, and essentially what he's saying is the uncertainty of a date of when that soil work would be completed. They just felt like it'd be best interest for them to go ahead, get the property divided so they could finish the closeout of the partnership. They do understand that if this is approved and the plat's recorded as an unbuildable lot before they do any construction on the new property, they would have to come back and do a resub, or basically an amendment plat adding the soils. Again, soil's work has been done. It's just really appears, as like I say in the staff comments, this really appears to be more of a timing issue. So we're comfortable with the plat being approved, subject to our comments and the waiver request, with the understanding that it probably will be in just a short amount of time before they come back with the soil work approved by the state and then have an amendment plat done, which we could handle administratively. We wouldn't have to bring that back here. And the applicant is present, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, this looks in order, so I'd make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Do we have a second? Have a second. Commissioner Bogle, further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it has been approved. Moving to item three, Yosef Sharon Property, 242086, two lots on .853 acres, Zoned RM, located along Flat Rock Road. Yosef Sharon is the applicant, includes request for creation of a non-billable lot and a fire hydrant waiver. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, sir. Thank you. The applicant is proposing to divide this property also into two lots. Lot one will contain an existing house. Lot Two has not had soils identified, so the applicant is asking for it to be approved as a non-billable lot. We did recommend originally that the applicant hire a soil scientist to identify potential septic soils prior to them submitting the plat, because then this wouldn't have been necessary. However, the applicant decided to move forward without identifying the soils and has submitted a letter, which is included on your iPads, explaining the reason for their request. This item was originally on the commission's agenda last month, but was removed because a fire hydrant determination had not yet been completed. We have received the determination from CUD, and the water line along Flat Rock here can support a fire hydrant, and I've attached that letter as well. Speaking with the applicant, they asked if they could also request a fire hydrant waiver, even though the line could support the hydrant. I explained to him at the time that historically, the Planning Commission would not grant a waiver in this case, since the line can support the hydrant, but upon further discussion, the applicant decided he did want to pursue his request for both a non-billable lot and a fire hydrant waiver to the Planning Commission. The applicant, I believe, is present. I believe I saw them walk in here, so if you want to have some, yes, she's raising her hand back there. So myself or the applicant will be happy to answer any questions at this time on this.
Commissioners. Questions for staff or the applicant?
I might not have understood it completely, but we're going to divide one lot into two lots. One will be non-buildable.
That's correct.
So what does that mean?
It doesn't have soils on it, so before they would put anything like a house or something on it, they'd have to have soils identified, similar to the one we just looked at. Now, this one's a little different, because as far as I know, they haven't had any soil work done. The last one was, they already had the soil work. It was more of a timing issue. This, I don't think they've even had soil work done on it. So now, the applicant may, you know, they're here, they may be able to correct that if that's not the case. But yeah, it's non-buildable because they couldn't put a house on it, and that's what it's zoned for.
I'm a little confused. Why would we do it? Why would we approve it? For a non-buildable lot?
Well, that's why they're asking for the waiver. You know, we don't allow that in our regulations. That's why they're asking for the waiver. And they have a letter, but like I said, the applicant is present.
Is there a reason that we would approve a waiver for the fire hydrant when there is one available?
Well, one can be, again, he has a right to ask, and we told him historically that the Planning Commission will not grant a waiver in that circumstance when it can be supported, but he wanted to make his case before the commission.
Like to hear from the applicant?
He wants to explain, yes. He wants to explain, that would be yes.
I'll ask that the applicant come forward this time, if he'd like to explain the situation. Please come up here. Come right up here to the podium and speak to the commissioners right there. Let's have your name and address, and then let you speak to the, you can pull that down if you need to.
So my name is Sharon Youssef, and we bought this house. It's very old house. It's 1950 something, and we remodeled the house. I borrowed some money from my brother, and to remodel the house, the house doesn't have any electric, any water. It was very old. We remodeled the house, and he gave me like $100,000 to help me, and I thought I was be able to get a loan from the bank to pay him back once I finished remodeling the house, but I couldn't get any loan. And it's very hard right now to get any loan, so I figured out that there is another lot attached to the house, and I told him, instead of getting any loan, I can give you this non-buildable lot and give it to you in a paper, so I don't have to pay you anything. And he's agree. He told me, well, I'm fine with this, and he understood that this non-buildable lot, but it needs to be under his name, just like, like he doesn't have to pay me any money right now. To take, he is agree to take this lot instead of giving me the money back. And the both of us, we agree on this.
Questions for the applicant? Anyone?
How big is the lot?
Just under an acre. So there'd be two lots on .85, I mean, which it's Zoned RM, so minimum is 15,000, so it's big enough. But you're basically looking at, you know, two lots that are going to be less than half acre each.
So the unbuildable lot's a half acre?
Roughly.
Yeah. Yeah, it's about, yeah, .42, so it's not quite a half acre.
And so your brother's willing to take a half acre lot that's not buildable in lieu of $100,000?
Yes. He told me that's fine. He's my brother, and he told me as long I have something great in saying that this is mine, and he understand that this one is non-buildable lot, he told me I'm fine with that, because I'm not be able to give him this money right now. So he agrees with me, and he's here also.
And then the fire hydrant, looks like the cost of that would be 7,500?
I mean, that's, that sounds about right.
Is that the reason you're not wanting the fire hydrant, just because of the cost?
Yes. I'm not be able to do it right now, and I ran out from the money. I spent all the money he gave it to me to finish up the house. It was very old. It took a lot of money from me, and I told him, let's, if I'm able to get this approved, I'm able to give it to you, and if you're able to help me later to complete the house, because I haven't finished it yet. It still needs some work.
Just so I'm clear on that, nobody's living there, the house is not?
No. No one is living over there.
Capable of living there?
No. I haven't, I haven't moved yet. I haven't completed remodeling the house yet. It still needs some work on it.
Wow.
If there are no other questions, thank you.
Doug, I guess the reason for the request is just so this lady can sell the lot, right? She wants to sell the lot?
Basically, that's what it sounds like, yes, sir.
And if she sells the lot and somebody else owns it, what can they do with it?
Right now? Now, with the existing house, I mean, obviously, once it's refurbished and whatnot, they could live in it. Now, as far as the other lots concerned, not much of anything. The only thing they could do is possibly ask for a special exception to put an accessory structure before a principal structure. That's about it. And that would have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for approval for a special exception, but that's, I mean, without any septic soil on the property, you can't build a house.
But we divide the lot, Lot Number Two is what we're talking about, right?
I believe that's correct, yeah. Lot One, I believe, has the house, yeah.
There's nothing on it right now?
Lot Two?
Yeah.
Correct.
So it would just sit there?
Yes.
It can't do anything to it? No structures, nothing?
Only if they went for a special exception for, like, if they wanted to put like a shed or something like that for personal storage only on the property, they'd have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeal for that, but that's, that's pretty much it. They can't build a house.
Can't put a cow on it?
I mean, I guess they could, but I don't know how, they'd probably go hungry after a while. It's not very big.
Chair, I have a question. Next thing, I guess, would be the fire hydrant. If you're not going to build a house on it, is there a fire hydrant, a reason to install a fire hydrant at this point? And if our regulations say that they need a fire hydrant, come in later with septic soils and, I mean, what did you say, you need a fire hydrant, or you need a sprinkler system, or whatever the regulations say that?
Well, I mean, by creating the new lot, by splitting it, they're creating, because both lots need to be within 1,000 feet of the hydrant, not just, let's not just think about the lot that's going to be empty. There is a house on the other lot that should have a fire hydrant in front of it. Now, what's there is there, you know, it's, it may not be within 1,000 feet today, but that's currently how it lays, you know, it's, you know, non-conforming, grandfathered, if you will. By splitting the lot, they're creating the need for putting the hydrant in, again, for the existing house, as well as for the vacant lot.
One other question. I was thinking at our last meeting, somebody had a fire hydrant, or maybe it was a couple of them, or some, a couple of meetings ago, where someone had this family farm that they wanted to split up, and were looking for a fire hydrant waiver. He quoted them a price of like 22,000?
That was because of the size of the line. Yeah, this is a smaller line, so it wouldn't be quite as much. Incidentally, funny you bring that up, because we had a meeting with that applicant the other day, and they ended up going with five acres, so they went through all that for no reason. But, but you're correct in your recollection. I believe that was last meeting, yes.
I think that's a good point, Doug, in terms of, on that one, the fire hydrant that they had was like 1,200, 1,400.
Yeah, it was on either side.
What's the closest fire hydrant to this location?
I believe 1,700, no, I'm sorry, that's the intersection. Did it say on the plat, Mike? Oh, a half mile to the nearest fire hydrant.
But the only reason, like, right now, we don't require a fire hydrant?
Well, the way it's sitting right now, yeah, the lots are what they are, so.
The only reason we're saying we need the fire hydrant now is because?
They're, they're splitting the, they want to split the property. Correct.
I need to figure this out, and I'm not sure I can. Split the lot, old house, grandfathered in, does that change the status of that lot as it relates to requiring a fire hydrant?
By splitting the lot, yes. By splitting the lot, they're creating two, basically two new lots out of the one, and that was, but they both would have to be within 1,000 feet at that point. That's correct.
So according to our regulations, they split the lot, and the old house would require?
Correct.
Fire hydrant.
That's correct. Because it's the lot, it's, the lot is changing, that's, that's why, because they're splitting it.
I'm sorry, I'm, kind of like to be able to accommodate family, but none of this sounds like it meets any of our regulations, the fire hydrant and/or the septic, the evaluation of the septic system. So if that's the case, I move to deny with staff comments.
Have a motion to deny. Do we have a second?
I'm going to second that motion, as I've just went through something similar to this, and the first thing they asked me about was fire hydrant location when I went to subdivide, so I second the motion.
We have a second. Further discussion?
Just my comments on that, I mean, I'd be more concerned about someone willing to take less than half of acre worth of slot in lieu of $100,000, but be that as it may. As a citizen, if I was a county commissioner, and there was no requirement for me to have a fire hydrant, and I decide I want to split my lot, now this all, this automatic requirement that I have a fire hydrant, that wouldn't make any sense to me. And so I'm going to vote no on your, pardon?
What did you say?
I said if I was, if I was, I'm going to vote no on your motion.
Once again, let me, let me make this really clear. Our regulations say that if we do this, a fire hydrant is required. That's what our regulations say, right?
That is correct, yes, sir.
But a waiver can be applied for and approved?
Well, that's what they're asking for tonight. That's correct.
But legally, we can approve that waiver?
Yes. Yeah, it's, it's within the subdivision regula, if you feel that they've met the threshold for, you know, having a hardship, I mean, that's what, I think what this boils down to, is a waiver is not something that they're, you know, that they're entitled to. It's kind of like a variance before the Board of Zoning Appeals, you have to meet the criteria with our, within the subdivision regulations. You know, the reasoning I've heard, a lot of it's financial, so I don't know if there's a practical hardship here.
Madam Secretary, call the roll.
No.
Jeff Phillips?
Yes.
Mike Kush?
No.
Lee Bogle?
Yes.
Ray Gooch?
No.
Jim Thompson?
Yes.
Pettis Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Motion carries, has been denied. Moving to item four. Tishner Minor Subdivision, 242092, one lot on two acres, Zoned RL, located along West Webb Road. David and Amber Tishner, applicants, includes request for fire hydrant waiver.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir. Thank you. The applicant is proposing to split two acres from a 26 and a half acre tract, leaving about 24 and a half acres or so. Most of staff comments on this plat have been addressed. However, the proposed lot is going to be outside of 1,000 feet from a hydrant. We did inform them that they would need a request of fire hydrant determination from CUD. At the time these comments were written, we did not have that. Now, since that time, we have received a confirmation from the Consolidated Utility District that a fire hydrant can be supported at this location. However, there is some other circumstances here that I think bear some consideration. This property is along West Webb Road. This is, for those who may not be familiar with it, this is at the southwest portion of Rutherford County. This is in near Eegoville. Actually, the road itself, as you can see, Mike's got the map up there, is actually part of the city limits of Eegoville. And you see that large development, well, that large property that Mike's kind of circling there, that is a development that has been annexed by the city of Eegoville. Its property's been annexed, and they are looking to put a development on to that particular property. There's going to be, I forget exactly how many lots there are, but it's going to be over 100 or so. The, as of right now, Consolidated Utility District has provided a will serve letter to that development, so there have the, they do have the ability to provide fire hydrants, and they do have the ability to, you know, have adequate water to serve that development within the city of Eegoville. What the applicant is asking, you know, since they're splitting a couple acres off their property, since they know that fire hydrants are on the way, they are asking for the ability to grant a waiver to that request, with the understanding and knowledge that there will be a development occurring across the street, and that fire hydrants will be installed. I spoke with the, well, we've had several conversations, actually. I've had conversations with Consolidated Utility. I've had conversations with the city manager at Eegoville, Helen Riggins. I've also talked with the development firm that's handling the design, not development firm, the design firm, that is handling the engineering for this site, SEC Engineering. Construction plans have been submitted. They're going through the review process. It appears the development will happen. It's more of a timing issue as far as when that's going to happen. They do show a fire hydrant right there at the, it'd be at the intersection of West Webb Road and the access drive going into the new development, which would be about 300 feet or so from the subject property. Now, the issue, of course, is when exactly is that going to happen? They're not out there actively working now, so it's going to, there's a little bit of a timing issue here as far as when there'd be a hydrant, but there are going to be hydrants as part of this development, and their property, the applicant's property here, is clearly going to be within 1,000 feet of that. So we explained to her the same thing that we explained to the last applicant, that, you know, historically, this is what the Planning Commission would decide on something like this, if it, the line can support a hydrant. However, considering there may be some extenuating circumstances here, and we have seen some situations like this similar in the past, where CUD has done some capital projects, and hydrants were coming, we've granted a waiver to a couple of properties with the knowledge that those were, hydrants were on the way, and the property was going to be covered by the 1,000 feet threshold. So we did tell the applicant that, you know, she still wanted to make her request tonight. The plat itself is in good order, with the exception of this waiver request. She is present. Jen Gilbert's her name, and she is here, and we can answer any questions you may have at this time, and I hope I didn't ramble on too terribly along there.
Ministers?
Doug, let me just ask this question. If we grant a waiver, knowing or thinking that the fire hydrant will be put in at some point in the near future, sometime in the near future, and it doesn't happen, what happens then?
The waiver's granted at that point. There's really nothing, there's no other recourse to come back unless they were to do a further resubdivision. That's about it. That's about it.
Questions, comments, or motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to approve the, apply it with the hydrant waiver.
Have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Further discussion?
Can we put some, I mean, just with the understand, I mean, let me just say this. As part of your motion, it's due to the fact that there is an impending development located across the street, even though it's in the city of Eegoville, we have no control over it. But in light of all that, is that kind of what you're going for?
Yes. And other staff comment?
All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, it has been approved. Moving to item five, Smith Farms, Section 2B, 242101. Thirty-four lots on 8.63 acres, zoned PUD, located along Blackman Road. Smith Farms is the development. LLC is the applicant. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir, thank you. The preliminary plan for this development was approved by the Planning Commission back in May of 2019. This plat does appear to be consistent with that approved plan. Our comments have been addressed. This plat is in good order. With that, we'd be happy to answer any questions on this.
Any questions?
Doug, when was the preliminary approved?
Excuse me, sorry. May of 2019.
Feel good?
Yes, sir. Yeah, once the first section is approved, it kind of locks in the preliminary.
Move to approve with staff comments.
Motion to approve. Have a second. Second. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, it has been approved. Moving now and to Section C, submitted for site plan approval. Item one is ORCA 243019. It's the number, construction of a 450 square foot office and other supporting structures for explosive storage on 9.21 acres, zoned PUD, located along Midland Foster Road. ORCA USA is the applicant. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir, thank you. The subject property was rezoned by the County Board of Commissioners to planned development back in August of this year. The site will be used for commercial explosive storage and is a relocation, as you'll recall, of the existing storage site located off of Shelbyville Pike, about two miles to the north slash northeast. The applicant is proposing to build a 450 square foot office building along with other supporting structures. The layout is generally consistent with what was shown in the approved pattern book. Most of our comments have been addressed. Actually, this plan is in pretty good order. We did have a couple, a meeting with the design engineer and the applicant and went through everything. But overall, they've done, you know, what we've asked them to do on this plan, and we feel it's in good order. So with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions. Chris McGuire is here with Hudson Steel Engineering as well, if you have any questions of him.
Any questions, comments?
If nothing has changed since August and your questions have been answered, I would make a motion to approve. Subject to all staff comments.
Motion to approve. Have a second. Second. Commissioner Thompson, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, has been approved. Item two, City Express Gas Station, Davenport Station, Lot 147. Is a reapproval, 243020. Construction of 5,000 square feet of general retail trade space, gas station, convenience market on 1.36 acres, zoned CS, located along Shelbyville Pike. US 231 GMG Joint Venture is the applicant. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir. The applicant is proposing to build a 5,000 square foot gas station convenience market on the property. This plan probably looks familiar to the commission. It's been before us a few times, originally back in February of 2022, but was, it was removed at that time due to drainage concerns. We did have a meeting with the applicant, applicant's design engineer back in March of that same year to discuss the drainage plan, and then was brought back to the Planning Commission in March of that same year where it was approved. Site approvals are valid for 18 months if a building permit has not been issued. One has not been issued for this, so the plan approval has expired, so they are asking for reapproval of this. I will say that there have been some changes to this, mostly due to the access of the property. You can see on the, what Mike's got on the screen right now and on your iPads as well. This used to be a write-in and a write-out. After looking at this anew, TDOT decided they thought the write-in and the right turn lane there was a better solution than having the write-in and write-out. We still need TDOT approval on that particular, just to make sure that they're fine with the design. But also, along with that, we need to also tweak the, some of the turn radius, attendant turn radius for some of the delivery vehicles on that, just to make sure that everything is up to snuff. That one right there, it looks like they're going to have some issues trying to access the, access the property. But the plan in of itself is in good order, but since it needed to be reapproved, we wanted to bring it back. But there have been a few changes. We just wanted to alert the Planning Commission to that. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Motion?
Doug, there was a tremendous amount of discussion as it relates to development, this development and developments like this, as far as turn lanes and traffic flow. Changes that made appear to me that, that would enhance traffic flow and make it better. Is that, is that the way you see it as well?
Yes, I believe so. They have a write-in, and of course, there is a traffic light there at Burnley Way and Rucker. So those leaving the site trying to go back toward the north would be able to just leave on the Burnley Way and then out with the signalized intersection. So everything looks like it's in good shape.
It's a right turn only into the property.
Off of 231, correct.
And the out is at the traffic light.
Correct, on Burnley Way, correct.
Staff's recommendation?
We'd recommend approval, subject to our staff comments, of course. And TDOT.
Move to approve with those staff comments.
Motion to approve. Second. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, it has been approved. Moving into Section D, rezoning and zoning ordinance amendments requests. All rezoning regulation amendment requests will be considered at the January 16, 2025 Board of Commissioners meeting unless deferred or withdrawn by the Planning Commission or the applicant. We'll start with item one, and that's the only item we have this evening. Mark Baker, REZ 24023. Location 1248 Twin Oak Drive. Commissioner is District Four, Robert P. Jr. The size of the site is approximately 4.3 acres. Tax map 90D, Group A, parcel 901. Existing zoning is residential medium density. Proposed zoning is commercial general. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir, thank you. The applicant would like to rezone the subject property to commercial general, as you stated, for equipment storage. According to the letter provided by the applicant, which I have attached with your staff report on your iPads, the applicant plans to store excess equipment, materials, and vehicles on the property that are not out working on projects. The applicant's employees will be the ones accessing the site. It will not be a public-facing type building. Future plans include repairing the existing shop building on the property to protect small tools and material from inclement weather and adding an office and parking area for employees. Again, I'll refer you to the letter that's within your agenda packets on your iPads for additional information. The applicant believed when they purchased the property earlier this year that it was already zoned commercially. We did a little research as staff. We didn't find any zoning files, but we do see older aerofotography from the mid 1990s that shows what appears to be a shop on the property with materials and vehicles being stored on-site. The property is also assessed commercially by the County Assessors Office and has been so at least since 2002, where it was labeled Jerry's Auto Repair. So it does appear that there was some sort of a commercial establishment on this property in the past. Access, of course, would be along Twin Oak Drive. They would have to do an engineered site plan prior to the development of the site. Should this be approved, demonstrate compliance with any parking and access standards, including paved parking for areas that are going to be used for vehicular traffic. Equipment storage areas and whatnot can have a gravel base. Landscaping and buffering would also be required to meet our requirements as well as any performance standards. I'll reiterate, based on our research, the property does appear to have been used for commercial purposes in the past. Most likely, it's a non-conforming business that existed prior to our current zoning codes. Since this property has been unused for several years, it's lost that non-conforming status, so that's why he's asking for this approval. With that, the applicant is present. We really didn't receive any phone calls about this. I did hear from the Commissioner of the District, Mr. P. He did call me this morning, or this afternoon, I should say, and say that he probably wouldn't be able to make it tonight, but said that he hadn't received any phone calls on this either. So the, this is adjacent to a new development in the city, a habitat for humanity development. The city did contact me about this, asking just some questions about the development itself. After explaining it to them, he said he would kind of shoot that up the flagpole, if you will, for the superiors at the city, and I never did hear anything back, so I don't believe they have any concerns either. So with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for staff? If there are no questions, I'll ask that the applicant come forward at this time. Just give us your name, your address, and we'll just let you address the commissioners there and just tell us a little bit what your purpose are for making these changes and what you want to do.
Mark Baker, I actually live on Betty Ford Road, but I bought this piece of property to store some equipment and some pipe. It's got a building on it. As, as was said, I had understood it was commercial and then found out it was not. I'm wanting to do just that. There won't be public access to it. It'll be my people, our people.
Sounds like you've got it covered. Appreciate it. Thank you, sir. We'll now have our, we'll go into our public comment period. And if anyone would make, like to make public comments at this time, we ask that you come forward. You'll have three minutes to make your comment, and we ask that you follow those guidelines. Good evening, Commissioner.
Gentlemen, Commissioners, by no means am I here to take Robert P.'s position on this. I'm here to represent Mr. Baker. I've known him all my life. He's got a very reputable business in Rutherford County. He's got a well-known family name. I don't believe this would have any negative effect on the area to what he's, what he's wanting to do, and I'd ask for you to support it for him. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else needs to come forward? Write your name and address, please.
I'm Leah Campolo. I live at 2826 Humanity Trail. I'm one of the houses brushed up against behind that wire fence. I just had some questions. Would this be something that would change my property value or, and then also, would it be possible for you to put up a, maybe a fence of some sort to where it would kind of block the view of all your stuff that you'll be storing? Let's see, I think that's really all I had.
All right, thank you. This is primarily just a comment, whether you're for or against, or any comments you might have, not a question and answer question, but.
Sorry. That's, that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Not seeing one else, we are closing the public comment period. Commissioners?
Doug, can you explain buffering requirements?
Yes, sir, yeah, I'd be glad to. This property being zoned commercially, if it's adjacent to a residentially zoned piece of property, they have to have what's called a type-two buffer. That can be either a landscape screen or, like you were saying, a privacy fence, something like that, or a combination of the two. So they can use existing plantings, but as part of a site plan submittal, they'll have to submit a landscaping plan to make sure that they meet those requirements. I don't believe, and the applicant can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe he wants to use the entire property, just a portion of it. So, you know, the screen will be done in such a way that'll maximize the impact of that screen.
I'm going to make a motion that we approve this based on state, on staff comments. It sounds like it's going to clean up some stuff that needs to be cleaned up.
Second.
Have a motion to approve and second. Further comments? Please call the roll.
Jim Agarwater?
Yes.
Jeff Phillips?
Yes.
Mike Kush?
Yes.
Lee Bogle?
Yes.
Ray Gooch?
Yes.
Jim Thompson?
Yes.
Edith Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion has carried. We move now to staff reports and other business. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir, thank you. Just a couple of items. Primarily, really just this, this one. As you know, we had our town hall event back in October for Plan Rutherford. It was very well attended. I know several of you that were, that were there. And we've had, since that time, we've been debating as to when to bring this up before the Planning Commission and County Commission to start the adoption process. Upon discussion with, with Commissioner Reed, Chairman Reed, Chairman Phillips, as well as Mayor Carr, I think what we've agreed upon is that a, a good first step before taking it to a public hearing, probably do a work session to kind of go over the plans. I'm sure you've all heard some of the, the items that we've been seeing on social media and whatnot, you know, give us a chance to, you know, kind of work through some of those. Of course, what we have online right now is a draft, is just that. You know, I don't anticipate the, what we end up voting on is going to look just like what's online right now. But we think a good first step would be just a work session after our regular meeting and at the end of the January, what is, the day meeting in January, which will be toward the end of the month. So we're thinking that would be something that we could do. We'll advertise it as a public meeting. The only advertisements that are really required for Plan Rutherford as far as the adoption is we have to have public hearings, and they have to be advertised 30 days in advance. But we would advertise this as a, as a regular meeting anyway. So we just wanted to kind of put that out there for discussion. Commissioner Reed, if you had any further comments on that or anybody else, just wanted to put that out there.
This is basically the same process that we did back in 2010. After the steering committee has basically put all of this together, we've taken all of the public comments. We've taken everything from out in the community over two years. Everything's been sent in to us. In fact, if you have had an opportunity to go through the 80-plus pages, you've seen this, you've seen how it's been put together. There's even a whole section in there that shows what has been sent in to us. Everybody, everything's been totally public, everything's been totally transparent, everything we've done. It has a multitude of maps of what we have seen in the area that's still available as far as development is concerned. And I think if there's anybody interested in any of this, they need to be looking at this plan. It just, in particular, I've had, I've noticed comments about legal bases, how can we do what we're doing or whatever. I urge everybody to go to at least page four and five. Page four and five is written of what is legal and how, how this will be put together and how to be done. It's very simple in what it says. It's, it shows totally what it is. Today, I pulled out the 2010 approved plan of, of what we did for the comprehensive plan. And right inside of it was the agenda for the Planning Commission when we approved it the last time. And it's exactly what we have said we're going to do right here. We brought it back to the Planning Commission. We went through work session. We went through a lot of the questions there, a lot of the pages. The Planning Commission asked a lot of different things about, why do you want to do this? Do you want to do this? And we worked with those changes and tried to, if there's anything that was out of order, we're trying to fix it. In fact, I've already seen some things in there. I don't even remember us really talking. In fact, I've already seen some things in there I don't even remember us really talking about. And I think there's some things there we want to change and, and move in certain areas and whatever. And we'll do that at next month's meeting, at that meeting. And then once the Planning Commission feels like, okay, I think we can go forward and vote on this, we'll vote on it. But I would urge that anybody is concerned about this. Also, on this Planning Commission, I think the first, or the comprehensive plan, it shows a whole list of everybody that's been involved in this. And it lists the members of the steering committee. And I think, you know, a lot of people don't really understand who was on the steering committee. They seem to think it was county commissioners. They seem to think it was Planning Commission that put all of this together. I want to say, um, who was involved in this was a group of citizens. They really were. When you, when you look at the fact of who the chairman was and who the group were that, that was involved and, and went through a lot of this, I think you'll, you'll see and understand that these were individuals that just basically were involved for the fact that they wanted to do the best for the county. And Rhonda Allen was the chairman. Many of you remember Rhonda, who served on this for so many years. I'd have to say that Rhonda trained a lot of us. Took us under her wing and showed us what was important in planning. She was also a county commissioner at one time. Mark Lee, you know Mark as an engineer. John Lodel, the director of the archives. Warren Russell. Warren has served on the city planning commission. Warren did an excellent job. Josh Sanders, sitting right down here, was involved in this. Gave us insight into what was involved as far as first responders. Mike Vaught, farmer out in Last Cassis. Mike has also been involved in planning. Coy Young was also involved in that. And then I served on it too, as vice chairman. So, I think it's important that you know that this just wasn't a, a group of governor officials. This was people who understand the county and wants to do something right for the county. And I think it's done, I don't think they did a great job, and I want to commend them for doing that. So, if you haven't read the plan, please go through it and, and read that. Where in January, we'll be ready to go ahead and start looking at some of the things in there. Any, any comments anybody has? Think this is a good way that we want to do that this time. I'll take silence as a way to go. We'll just do it, plan on doing that. It'll probably be the...
It'd be the day, the fourth Monday of the month.
Fourth Monday of the month. That's the way we'll go with that one. Any other business?
I do have one other announcement that I'd like to make. Yeah, it's the 27th. I'm sorry, I just didn't have my calendar up, but it's the 27th. We're, this is our final meeting for calendar year 2024. It's hard to believe, you know, it just seemed like yesterday we were in, you know, the starting of the year, so here we are. But I just want to say thank you to you all. It's been a, it's been a busy year. It's been kind of a hectic and crazy year, as I'm sure it has been for everybody. We've had a lot of ups and not so much ups, ups and downs, if you will. But I just want to say that I'm thankful for each and every one of you here and for all the work that you do for the county, all the work that you do to help us do our jobs and everything. It's very much appreciated. I just want to wish you all a very Merry Christmas and a happy and safe New Year.
There's no other business. I want to wish you a Merry Christmas, and we are adjourned.